Six o'clock, and welcome to the January ninth meeting of the governing body. I call this meeting to order. If you will give your attention to Councilman Duncan, who will provide the indication this evening, stand as you are able and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Please bow your heads. I'll ask everyone this evening to be prayerful and thoughtful for those who are working, volunteering, both out in the community, members of our own city staff, assisting those who are cold this evening, working hard to help them bear this very difficult weather the last few days and what's going to be very difficult weather in the week ahead. I ask us to be prayerful and mindful of all those who are in need and anything you can do to help them, do your part to assist them and get them through this difficult time. And with that, those are where my prayers and thoughts are this evening, Mayor. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda, the president of the Board of General.
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Valdivia Akala.
Here.
Ortiz. Banks.
Here.
Cal.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Hopper.
Here.
We have nine present.
Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Two, Presentation. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Governing Body. The first presentation is on the 2024 Annual Minority Women and Disadvantaged Business Enterprises Utilization Goal Recommendation.
Wrong Agenda.
No, that's not what I have on my agenda, sir.
Wrong Agenda.
Hey.
We can go with that, but I don't think we're prepared.
I think that was a test for us. First presentation is the Topeka Fire Department Emergency Medical Response Assessment. Fire Chief Phillips and Misty Buckner from Wichita State University, who will be joining us by Zoom, will lead you in that presentation.
Chief Phillips?
Good evening. I want to thank you all for this opportunity. As the memo stated that I accompanied all of you along with this copy of the study, this was a project that was initiated by then interim manager Cochran shortly after I took over as chief in 2022. Over the next 12 to 14 months, we worked with Misty and the Public Policy Management Group from Wichita State to take a look at EMS delivery by TFD in the city of Topeka and within Shawnee County as a whole. Tonight, Miss Buckner, as well as another member of her staff, are joining us by Zoom to go through their presentation and their report.
Thank you. Miss Buckner, are you ready?
I am ready. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having Tom Jenkins and I join you. My apologies that we cannot be there in person. Hopefully, we will have another chance to connect in the future. Before I get started, I want to just talk a little bit about the Public Policy Management Center and a little bit about what the purpose of this work was. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and pull up the presentation here first. Everybody can see that?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So just a little bit about the Public Policy and Management Center. We've been around for over 65 years. Our whole purpose is to help local governments, state agencies, and nonprofits enhance their public service to best serve your community. So we do work in a lot of places, but research and organizational assessments is one of the areas, especially in the fire and EMS world, that we have some content expertise and have done a few of these studies across the state. My background is in local government. Chief Jenkins is joining us tonight between us. We have quite a few years of experience either in city management and local government or in direct service for public safety. So thank you for having us all. I also want to just say thank you to Chief Phillips and his administration team and the folks who represented the local union firefighters, who are part of our leadership team. Obviously, you went through a lot of transitions and changes during the time we've been working with them. Their professionalism, their commitment to service to the community was at the top of the game. And you have a lot to be proud of in the service that they provide for your community. So with that, just to get started on what we were asked to do and what brought us to your community, I'll just could provide a little bit of the background, and then I'll hand it over to Chief Jenkins, who will kind of walk through the data pieces of this. I'll jump back in with some of the stakeholder feedback and us working within the department. And then so a few examples from other communities, and then that'll lead us to recommendations, and then we'll be open for questions at the end for that. Just to get started on the background for this, we were brought in, as Chief Phillips talked about, to specifically look at the Topeka Fire Department and their readiness and their abilities to look at the emergency medical transport. We were specifically working within the organization, and I just want to pull that out from the beginning. This is not a full systems overview. This is not an assessment that looks at all the different parts of what goes into this, but specifically to look within the department to figure out their own capacity and their readiness to do this type of work, before you can look at a full system rate to start with where you are and that factor of the work. So that was a little bit of the background. We, in doing that, we were asked to do a couple of different things. One was to gauge internally the stakeholders and their input on where they felt. We did that in a variety of ways, and I'll go into more of that detail more. We're to look at current structure and best practices, how that alignment works. As I said, we engage stakeholders and their feedback internally, and then looking through the data analysis and looking at examples from other communities. Finally, Tom will be giving some of those recommendations at the end. So we appreciate the opportunity to do this. Assessments are always hard because you're inviting somebody in from the outside to look at your organization, and we really appreciate that opportunity with the fire department and their leadership and their representation from the firefighters to be able to do that. So Chief Jenkins, I think I'll run slides, and I'll turn it over to you to kind of walk through.
Okay, this is a team effort, so I appreciate your help, Misty. All right, so here's a little background that I assume many of the elected body is probably already familiar with, that this is a tiered response model that you have for handling emergency medical calls within the community. That contract is with GMR and what used to be called AMR to operate ambulances inside the city of Topeka. That number varies. They run primarily 12-hour shifts. And what is certainly not unique among fire departments, but is certainly characteristic of Topeka Fire, is the teamwork involved, that they are a supplemental first response service. They provide not just basic-level emergency medical care to those people experiencing time-sensitive, life-threatening medical emergencies, but also advanced-level medical care. They started advanced-level medical care through paramedic fire companies at selected fire stations in 2020. And like every fire department across the country, the vast majority of their calls are emergency medical in nature, 68% of them in the year referenced here on this slide. What is also important to note about Topeka, as a career firefighter myself, is that there are many fire departments across the country, metropolitan areas like Topeka, that see an erosion of fire-related emergencies. But Topeka is one of the few in which you would find a significant number of time-sensitive, life-threatening medical emergencies and a lot of fire business also occurring within the city. So just if you were to use business terms, you'd call it a very efficient fire department, but as another career firefighter, I'd say it's a very busy fire department in a lot of respects. On the next slide, you see that in order to serve your citizens that need help, they use 18 fire companies every day. Those are ladder companies, also referred to as truck companies, engine companies, and four that I mentioned earlier that are earmarked as paramedic-level advanced life support units. All firefighters in the city of Topeka have that basic level of service or incentives to do things above the EMT basic level. And dispatch is a consolidated, co-located effort there in the Shawnee County Emergency Communications Center. So while it is not completely consolidated, you do at least have a very functional co-located facility that provides some solution to what many communities face in terms of emergency communications obstacle. When we encountered the opportunity to work with your community, we knew that we had to look at a lot of different things. So one of the first things we looked at was the current quantity and deployment of paramedics. Paramedics are the lifeblood of any emergency medical function for a city. They're the people that are literally going to save lives. And so understanding how they're deployed and structured within a community, both with GMR, AMR, and with the fire department, is important. We had to understand what it was going to take to continue training, that paramedics have a likelihood of promoting and becoming maybe unassignable to fire trucks over time. And so you have to kind of keep that steady stream going. We wanted to understand leadership and management capacity, and we also wanted to understand just the logistical challenges if the city of Topeka Fire Department wanted to undertake more involvement in the EMS transport realm. So lots of different things to look at when we started this game. The things that I think are important for you all as elected officials to understand is that the current number of paramedics and what we would call EMT advanced-level certified firefighters, those firefighters that are certified above the emergency medical technician basic level, it's sufficient for what is currently being offered in the city. However, to do anything more is not sustainable by the numbers of people that have those certifications. That is not unique to Topeka. In communities all across the country, left to right, top to bottom, there are shortages of these street-level healthcare providers. And what does not play in favor of the city of Topeka is the proximity to the metropolitan area of Kansas City, that you always have, you know, a very tough circumstance with the competitive nature of that job. Paramedic training, compensation, the leadership and management of those people, it's just critical for the success of the emergency medical program, no matter how it's delivered in a city. And doing the transport service requires a significant investment by a community in terms of the human capital, the financial capital, and even the logistics capacity of your fire stations if they ever were to be quartered there. And so in our assessment of the data, how does the current service look in the city of Topeka? You will find that, you know, the average number of available ambulances varies by the level of service that they provide, that there are some ambulances on the street that are advanced life support, that paramedic-level service, and those vary, you know, somewhere between eight and six. There are some numbers of basic life support ambulances that, in the timeframe mentioned on the graph in front of you, vary between two and four. And what you will currently find is that, you know, we want to get, when there's a time-sensitive, life-threatening medical emergency, what the first thing that matters to a patient is that you get somebody by their side within 240 seconds, four minutes, and that there are current gaps in the community that even with fire stations that are distributed strategically throughout the community, there are some gaps even in that four-minute timeframe for basic life support. That's the most fundamental capability. The advanced life support capability, that's what AMR provides through some of their ambulances, and you have four fire companies that also do that of the 18 available in the city of Topeka. That timeframe is 480 seconds, or eight minutes. And the structured concentration of those units for the Topeka Fire Department are actually very effective. They're centrally located, and it does cover a significant number of the calls with some high-level criticality that the fire department and the ambulance service encounters. However, the north side of Topeka and other small areas of the community do show that even in that 480-second timeframe, there are still some opportunities for some improvement. The staffing models for both the ambulance service and the city of Topeka are just characteristically different. AMR uses a system status management model, a model that moves around resources on a different shift schedule that allows them to have some strategic advantage based on how many resources are available and usually the historical call volume and geospatial locations of calls. The Topeka Fire Department does what most fire departments do, and that's distribute fire stations in an equitable manner across the community in a 24-hour model. The information about AMR and GMR's ambulance scheduling system was not necessarily even part of the scope of this project, and so its interaction with our presentation is limited. But what I mentioned earlier is that you normally have about 2/3 of the ambulances that are advanced life support that are out there on the streets and some number of basic life support units that are out there on the streets, interacting with patients every day, and that includes both the city of Topeka and Shawnee County. The performance of those ambulances in Zone One, which is the vast majority of the city of Topeka, is shown on the screen for the years mentioned in front of you. Their requirements are that for emergencies, that they get there within nine minutes, 80% of the time, or within 14 minutes for non-emergency calls. And you do see that in 2022 in particular, that you've seen some impact on the influx in call volume when you look at the percentage of calls that were deemed late for the ambulance service.
I'll jump back in here. Part of the work that we did was to make sure that we were hearing from the internal stakeholders. So we spent three days in working with the department, making sure we heard from all shifts and making sure that we had an opportunity to listen to administration as well. So we were able to touch and hear from quite a few of the folks that are on the street and performing services, taking care of the community. We asked them a variety of questions, leading through kind of what's going well, what are opportunity, what are concerns, and then we drilled down specifically to the questions about medical transport. Never known firefighters to be shy, so they provided us a lot of information and feedback on the department and the service in the community. Some of the things that I would want to highlight is just an overall feedback about the communication. I think that had been a concern. There's a lot of positivity that was expressed about the direction the department was going under Chief Phillips, and the communication had improved. I think this is continuously an issue with the department, something we hear often just because of how they operate across shifts and how they operate in different locations. So getting that feedback was really important. Transparency was critical, and including feedback from this report was something that we talked about, making sure that they knew what we said following these findings. Chief Jenkins mentioned this earlier, that you have a very active department, and there's a lot of pride in the services that they provide to your community. I think that the types of calls that they get, the unique buildings that are in Topeka, being the Capitol, and the services that are provided, they have a lot of pride and commitment to the community that they have and do that for all of us. Things that they talked about as potential concerns is training. They were glad to say that they were able to get more time off, and that was being approved. But continuous training is a concern, especially within the area of emergency medical services and keeping up to date with those needs for that department. Additionally, funding in areas of not just training, but compensation. As Chief Jenkins mentioned, you're in a competitive market with the KC Metro and Lawrence Douglas County Emergency Fire Medical has a different model, but definitely compensation is a part of that. But as well as looking at apparatus and equipment, and I did want to note that they do know that there are investments happening within the facilities, and continuing that, I think, is really important for all of these conversations, too. Chief Jenkins talked about this, but even thinking about expansion and the needs of facilities to be able to accommodate any type of emergency medical transport in the future also was connected to those issues. Attraction retention, there's not an department that we work with that this isn't at the top of their issues and concerns. Certainly, they mentioned some things that had been happening that they think are important, but a lot of what they thought we were just catching up a little bit and the need to continue a full press to make sure that you are able to keep the firefighters that you have and attract and others to join the profession was a significant part of that conversation. Lastly, on medical transport, I think in the report we talk about some of the concerns that they express. They are out on these calls. They care about the community, and they want to provide the top service to the community. They had anecdotal, you know, situations that they were able to share that they had experienced with concerns for medical transport. But they also readily expressed concerns about whether the Topeka Fire Department, right, was ready to take on any additional services at this time and whether or not that transition from a fire department to be able to continually to advancing emergency medical services was concerned, you know, that they expressed that it would need to be a thoughtful process and how to get from where they are to where they need to be in the future. So those are kind of the highlights from the internal, and glad to talk more about that, but I'm going to turn it back over to Chief Jenkins now. Oh, no, I'm not. I'm going to talk about community comparisons. I won't add a lot on this. We tried to look at communities that had some type of transition or we thought might be comparable for where Topeka is with other external private sector companies providing some type of a medical transport or that they were doing some innovations in this area from size. That's in the report. I'm not going to go into details for it. But again, I think the point that we want to make from this is there's a lot of opportunities for Topeka to consider, and there's some examples out there that could be followed. And there's also challenges, right, with any type of full system approach to this that'll have to be in consideration. Chief, now you're up.
Okay, now I'm ready. All right, so the meat of any report is the recommendations. And as Misty mentioned, you have a wonderful fire department serving your community, who not only was good to work with, but very open and honest with us as we dug through the litany of questions that we had in order to understand the problems that you asked us to look at. So the recommendations that we have in front of you, I'll just kind of read through, and we're happy to take any questions on them. The first is that you have four advanced life support, those paramedic-level or equivalent fire companies within the community. And that's what we recommend, evaluating the placement of those fire trucks in conjunction just with where those equivalent capability ambulances are normally posted. Now, the ambulances have a different staffing model in which, you know, their location is not always consistent and known. But in order to have a symbiotic relationship, some evaluation of the fire stations that have those capable EMS companies at the paramedic level in conjunction with your ambulance service is warranted. Again, the standard is that, the standard is that you want to have a paramedic-level provider on scene within 480 seconds. And so you have a benchmark with which to evaluate the best locations for those particular units. Recommendation two is to consider adding more, that there's a paramedic shortage, and that's all across the country. You see your local ambulance provider utilizing basic-level ambulances. And so having advanced-level life support fire companies at a greater quantity than you have today is certainly a worthwhile investment to fill in those gaps where you have an opportunity to serve your citizens better. And that's meaning that you want to get an advanced-level provider on the scene within 480 seconds 90% of the time. Recommendation three is that those advanced-life-support fire companies currently have a minimum staffing of just three firefighters. And prioritizing four-person staffing on those companies, on those fire trucks, allows them to recoil, that if they did encounter an ambulance that didn't have an equivalent-level provider or if the criticality of a patient was such that a firefighter needed to ride with the ambulance provider to the hospital, having four people on a fire truck that was a paramedic-level or an advanced-life-support-level fire truck is also another good investment that is recommended in order just to make sure that that fire truck will quickly recoil and be back available, whether it be for a fire-related incident, an emergency medical-related incident, or an incident that didn't fit neatly into either category. Recommendation four is that with emergency medical supervision and interaction requires the need for leadership and management and troubleshooting and questions and everything in between. And so there should be consideration provided to establish an EMS supervisor position on each of the fire department, which means adding that staff and helping the fire department through those staff members increase their training and just system reliability support to help establish that EMS program in a way that today it is not. Recommendation five is that the communication framework between your ambulance provider and the Topeka Fire Department needs to be integrated better, maybe through the franchise agreement and through regular meetings with an agenda. That anytime you have two entities that are working together in a tiered system, it's a recipe for just needing to make sure that you have an architect for good communication, that whether that's to address questions, whether that's to solve problems. And so some emphasis on that relationship through the franchise agreement or any other potential, you know, catalyst is recommended by us. Recommendation six is that that franchise agreement in, at least when the report was written in 2024, was to modify it to make sure that you at least had five or even more advanced-life-support or paramedic-level ambulances available daily. And that 80% of the total resources should always be paramedic in nature, that it is not uncommon for ambulance providers to utilize a model that incorporates both basic-level provision of service and advanced-level provision of service, but the vast majority of it, never knowing what the criticality of calls that you encounter might be, should be advanced life support in nature. And so consideration to that franchise agreement to make it a little bit more robust in the paramedic or advanced-life-support realm is recommended. Recommendation seven is to create a notification for Status Zero. Status Zero is just a street-level terminology for when your ambulance provider is without any available ambulances, and that happens to any ambulance provider, that there is no crystal ball to know when people will have time-sensitive, life-threatening medical emergencies. But when that happens, it is important that notification be provided to the Topeka Fire Department so that they don't think that it's just business as usual, that if there are no ambulances available... if there are no ambulances available, um, that's information that is pertinent to those firefighters trying to do their job, and so a notification mechanism to the TFD is appropriate. That could be to make sure that advanced life support fire companies are going out of their first due district, uh, to help out other fire companies, knowing that there might be a delayed response. It may even be, uh, for the fire department to adjust its risk profile, um, if it's fighting a fire, so a lot of reasons that recommendation seven is pertinent. Recommendation eight is to establish common language and interoperability with, um, the ALS and BLS ambulance units, so that firefighters know what level of service they're receiving, um, based on the ambulance responding to their call. Also, in a, in a world where, um, technology drives a lot of things, uh, continued interface and interoperability so that the firefighters know estimated arrival times of the ambulance service using the computer-aided dispatch system of both the ambulance provider and the Topeka Fire Department, those things should be emphasized so that we're making decisions on the street with those people experiencing a medical emergency, which is with as much information as possible. Recommendation number nine is to make sure that we're interrogating 911 calls correctly, and that is to review at least 15% of the emergency medical calls that arrive at the Shawnee County Emergency Communications Center that are of high criticality. So the terminology we would use there is that they're either delta or echo level calls. These are life-threatening medical emergencies, to have those reviewed with the results shared to the fire department. Again, just another continued emphasis of collaboration and teamwork between your fire department and the ambulance provider. The last page of recommendations, 10, is that the Topeka Fire Department should complete a critical task analysis to tier their responses to medical calls. Not all medical calls are created equal. There are some calls that require just a fire truck and the complement of firefighters assigned to it to supplement an ambulance and take care of a patient and make sure they get the treatment that they need and deserve, but there are some medical calls that require just more people, uh, that could be a cardiac arrest, that could be a multi-system trauma, and so, um, going through the variety of call types that, um, you will encounter within your community would allow the fire department to make sure that its response is structured appropriately for the level of medical care that you can expect from your ambulance provider. Recommendation 11 is that you should, uh, create or, in many cases, improve upon existing incentives for EMS training. You're in a competitive environment, as I mentioned earlier, and I don't know that I could emphasize that enough. Um, as a former fire chief and a 26-year, uh, career firefighter, um, fire departments across the country have to be very interested in 2024 in providing emergency medical care. That's just the circumstances we find ourselves in, and the most fundamental ingredient, uh, to that is to make sure that our firefighters have, uh, you know, a very fertile opportunity to have a wonderful career and invest in their own career by attaining specialized training in emergency medical, uh, care, and so whether that's EMT advanced level certification, EMT paramedic level certification, um, these kinds of incentives are essential to the continued sustainment and growth of EMS care by your fire department. Last, uh, but definitely not least, is that, uh, we recommend your city, uh, train anywhere between 15 and 25 firefighters annually in, in, in the paramedic program, with a asterix here that the paramedic program is typically a two-year program in most, uh, geographies. Uh, there are online programs potentially available, depending on the rules of the state, but, um, to, to make sure that you have a steady bench strength within your fire department to not only maintain the advanced level, uh, emergency medical care that your fire department currently provides on those four fire trucks of the 18 out there on the street every day, but to also make sure that if there is an appetite to grow that capability and serve your community better through your fire department, that you just have the ability to do that. So those are our recommendations, and I think Misty, I'll kick it back over to you.
We've provided quite a bit of information. We're going to, uh, take down the, uh, screen here and we'll just open it up for questions and dialogue, um, and again, want to thank you for the opportunity to work with your, uh, city and to, uh, work with this department.
Okay, thank you, Misty, and, uh, Chief, open it to the governing body now and, uh, see if there are any questions, follow-up that you'd like to ask, um, that were generated during this presentation. Councilman Duncan?
Because I have some comments, and then if they turn into questions or anyone feels a, a response is necessary, that's fine. Um, I guess there's a couple of issues here for me. The, the first is, and I have no vested interest in AMR, okay? I don't believe they're perfect, and I think there are some issues that we probably need to address with them. I, I'm a little just bothered by the fact that we get some half-information in this report that sort of tells us AMR could be doing a better job, but we don't have enough information to give you exactly what that is. So my point is, if we have some specific issues with AMR, let's meet about that, let's identify what those are, let's go talk to the county and AMR and get those fixed, because regardless of what this plan is, this isn't happening tomorrow, so we need to get those resolved, and I'm happy to be part of those conversations. We also have not been active in contracts with AMR at the county level. We've sort of stepped back and let them control that, and maybe that's something we need to be more actively involved in, instead of just ceding it all to the county and then working on our agreement so that we have a more active voice in that process to address some of these issues. And, and the reason I bring those up is, I think whatever those issues are is totally independent of what we're here to discuss, and I think the larger issue for us as a governing body, which has been since I got here four years ago, and I think it was right when I got here, that year, first year, there was even a commission that we put together that brought up some recommendations, and when they got to the issue of how all-in we want to move forward on EMT and EMS service, they sort of passed the buck and said, "You need to decide that as a governing body," and in four years, we have not made any policy decisions, to my knowledge, as to what direction and how all-in we want to be. Now, to be clear, I've told the firefighters this, and Chief Phillips is doing his job. He's doing exa- in lieu of us providing any direction, he's doing exactly what he should do. He's improving service the best he can, and he's moving forward with the program, and he's, he's doing exactly what he should do as our chief, but I think we have, in lieu of that, we've created sort of a piecemeal approach to this, and in fact, number five on the best practices up there was infas- you've got to have a good infrastructure, and I think we're putting a lot of parts in place without actually, without having made that policy decision, we're not providing the infrastructure for what the chief is trying to build, and that's a pro- going to be a problem eventually because he's not going to have exactly what he needs to move this thing forward. I think we're reaching the point, I, I don't have any major issues with a lot of this, and in fact, I think if we want to keep moving forward, great, let's have those conversations and talk about what that means, but I think we've reached the point where we have got to bring someone in to tell us what it's going to look like if we are ready to go all-in on whatever that service is, and maybe that's option A, where we have a hybrid service that works in cooperation, like some of the examples they give us with the ambulance service in that county. Maybe that's option B that says, "No, we want our fire department to become the ambulance service, EMT EMS service in the city of Topeka and Shawnee County," so that's what it's going to cost. How many trucks? How many personnel? What's the annual budget? Do we need new stations for that? We don't have any of that, but we're sort of moving in that direction, so I would just like us to consider that and start making some of those bigger decisions so that we can better support exactly what they're trying to do, and I think that's only fair to AMR, to the county, and to our citizens and our fire department to move in that direction. So those are kind of my general thoughts as I've read through this. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with, uh, with Councilman Duncan, but I think we ought to simplify a little bit. I think if we start talking about who should be operating the transport system at this point, uh, it's just premature. I think the, the question in my mind, the number one question in my mind, is what is the appropriate level of service for this community? And I think the fact that it's not just the city of Topeka, it also includes the rest of Shawnee County and several fire districts is germane to this discussion. If we can answer that question, and I, you know, some metrics were thrown out, 480 seconds, 90% of the time, whatever that is, there's, there's clearly metrics out there for communities of our size and geographic distribution. If we can figure out what is, what's, what's the appropriate level of service and do we have it? If, if the answer is yes, we have it, then I think we're done. If it's no, we don't have it, which I think everybody kind of thinks that's probably the answer to it, then the question goes to what Councilman Duncan said, what, what are the opportunities to get to that level of service and how much is it going to cost? And we, we tend to jump to, let's buy ambulances for the fire department, and that may very well be the answer long-term, but, you know, another option would be pay AMR to operate more transport units if that's what we need, and so I think we need to get to the point where we can compare apples and apples and decide as a community what, which way we want to go. Uh, so again, I think determining the appropriate level of service, uh, for, for the entire community, including the rest of Shawnee County, is, is really the first step, and I haven't, I haven't heard that anywhere. I don't know if, I don't know what that is, I don't know how you determine it, uh, but I think, Mayor, at, at some point, and I hate to, hate to talk about another committee or whatever, but I think at some point, if you are able to get a group of folks together that can fairly quickly get us to that point, and maybe that's, you know, fire department personnel and some county involvement, obviously AMR involvement, uh, the hospitals, I don't know who that might include, but we have got to figure out, and, and I would suggest, I, I'm impressed with the report that we got from Wichita State and the folks that did it, uh, you know, maybe continuing to engage with them and ask them to help us as a semi, uh, outside source to help us determine what that level of service is, then I think we can start talking about the bigger picture. How do we get there? How much is it going to cost? How much do, are we willing to spend as a community to get to the level of service that seems appropriate? Thank you, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Vadivjakula?
Thank you, Mayor. I really agree with what both, uh, Councilman Duncan and, uh, Dobler are saying. There was a lot left hanging during that very short period of time when City Manager Trout was on board, when we had the fire commission, and we know the bottom line why that came, you know, more or less into being was for, uh, that, that kind of going back and forth on whether the fire stations would stay open or not. To me, it's exactly on point what, uh, Councilman Dobler is saying, and whether that be a resurrection for a brief period of time of the fire commission, uh, you know, whether that be a short-term committee, whatever you want to call it, uh, I think that that is going to be, from what I can tell, uh, it's going to be able to collect that information that is needed so that we're not just jumping into something before we actually have everything we need. So I, I concur with both of them and think a resurrection is needed of some commission or committee. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Duncan?
I did have a question, Chief. Right now, if we go to a scene and we assist, do we get any reimbursement, or is there any scenario, once we're ALS, that we get any reimbursement, or do we have to be the transporter? How does that work?
Uh, currently, we do not receive any reimbursement for treatment that we provide. As part of the agreement with, uh, AMR, there are certain instances with certain medical supplies that we may utilize, uh, while we're at a scene that, that they will then, um, replace, but, uh, other than that, but as far as like from the patient, like from what they, they pay for that, that transporter or anything, no, we don't receive any of that.
Does any of that change under any of these suggestions or recommendations or, like, things you're moving forward with?
I, I think the main way that changes would, would be if we were doing, uh, some level of transport, but, uh, once again, that's, you know, that's just part of that whole overall question, but, um, outside of that, no, currently, there's not really any option out there where we start receiving payment.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I appreciate the comments that have been made so far. I do think that, you know, overall where we are, and maybe we can move forward this time, is, is to do a full assessment, not just of the, certainly of all of the BLS and ALS needs in the community, how they're being met now, and, and so on. When you look at having the fire department do it, you've also got to balance that against the, the demand for suppression, I mean fires and so on, and who's available for that. I think the last time we did a comprehensive study on that, we did have somebody from, uh, I forget the accrediting agency, but it was, it was not strictly within the fire realm, it was more through, maybe you remember, Chief, but, um, it, it looked at the, the overall balance in communities of how you put together a, an entity that does all, everything, that has the ambulances itself in, under the fire department or whoever, and then how it works with them being separate. It was really pretty fascinating to read and, and even the details on response time, but it, it included the stakeholders from all the different partners in that service, not just within the fire department, and maybe it's time for us to, with, with the testimony we've had already, to, to do something like that again, that looks at that whole big picture. In the report, there was a mention of, of capacity for putting other vehicles in fire stations, and something that's always bothered me was that we didn't finish that plan for how many stations we needed for suppression and, and what other services we would do before we started fixing fire stations. We're still in process on that, but if we could get that whole master plan done, it would, it would make sense for the, the department as well as the, the management, so would encourage the thought about that. Thank you.
Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't disagree, Councilwoman, but I think, uh, I'm always a proponent of, let's keep it as simple as we can. If we go to the big picture, we're talking months, we're talking lots of, lots of stuff before we get an answer. If we can answer the question of what kind of service does this community, what's appropriate for this community, what level of service, or a range, you know, of a level of services, then we can probably get there. I mean, if, if, if the answer is it's, it's not, and we need to do some more stuff, then I think, you know, obviously, if we're going to be talking about more transport units and where do they go, uh, then, then we're probably there to, to the bigger picture, but I think that's, uh, in my mind, we have a small study to start with, with a very limited scope and a short timeframe, and we get that question answered, and then, depending on the results of that question, we go on to whatever the next step is, and that's obviously a much bigger, much bigger discussion. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller?
I'll keep it brief. I guess what I remember, and it's before you've been around, Council, Councilman, but before you were on council, was that the issue that was hot in the day back then was whether we needed 11 fire stations, whether we needed more, and what happened for a number of years was discussion about closing one, and that has to do with how many firefighters you have, or whether you've got space to store different kinds of equipment and so on, so that's why I, I think doing it all together, uh, could start at one point or the other, but they all end up connecting in with, all the pieces end up connecting together. Thank you.
If I, if I may, um, I've talked with City Manager about this topic and other concerned council members, and I think it's timely because, um, in my office, I've received a lot of concerns, uh, from citizens, because I think, to answer your question, Councilman Dobler, is, uh, uh, what we have adequate or enough for our community until it's not, basically, until you need it, it's not. So I think it's important for us to remember that there was some work that was done, and, um, I wasn't directly involved with that work. I'd like to see what that final summary was, but I'd like to go from there, and I don't want to recreate, I want to go to that next level, and I would like to direct the city manager to put together a short-term task force, uh, from the mayor's office to study not only this report, but recommendations that were given prior, to see if there are some repeats or duplications, and, and give us a shorter timeline. I'd like to see something like, I'm just starting off, maybe six months, and have us so that we have so that we have an incentive to get the work done. I'd like to ask Wichita State to be a part of that as well and continue with that effort. And if you could do that, city manager, give us an outline, share it with the governing body to make sure that all those necessary partners are included in that group. And give us a structure to bring to the body something that we can take a first step on and answer that basic question as proposed by Councilman Dobler. If you could get that to us as soon as possible, so we don't get too far into the year and use up much of the year because time goes so fast. And six months, I think should give us plenty of time to meet on a regular basis and bring not just the experts, but some of the community people who were involved in that first-time effort too, may still be interested in providing some input, maybe not as a direct member of the task force, but to provide input to the new members.
Understood. Let me have several weeks to visit some more with you, with the chief, Wichita State, and kind of get a little bit more complete picture of this, and we'll bring you back a plan.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions, the chief? And then, Misty, thank you again for the presentation. I appreciate the information. I suspect we'll be hearing more from you and encourage you to communicate as often as necessary with our city manager so we can put this together post haste and, and really get some serious discussion with an end to that discussion with action items for us to consider.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council members. We appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
We have another presentation, Mr. City Manager. We have another presentation.
We do. The next is on the Polk Quincy Viaduct Project and update by Sylvia Davis, our utilities director.
Director Davis, good to see you again.
Good to see you too. Thank you. I will try to be brief. I'm sure there'll be lots of questions and answers, so we have staff available as well if they get pretty technical in nature. But let's start off by talking about, can I, okay, great. Thank you. Polk Quincy, as you know, is a large replacement and realignment project that KDOT is, has kicked off, and we are well underway with planning, design. And as part of that, the city needs to relocate several, several thousand feet of utility lines to get out of the way so that they can come in and do their work. KDOT's project spans from McVicker to Sixth Street, and this shot here is just an overview, a refresher for those who might not be quite as familiar with the project, the downtown scope of that realignment. The next slide is the broader from McVicker over to Sixth Street, the scope of KDOT's project. So they're referring to this as Polk Quincy West. So just want to kind of recap that. Where we are at, this has been talked about for quite some time, and the city has been partnering with KDOT for the last several years, trying to get a good plan of action down, get some design and some redesign and funding available to make this happen. I stole this slide from KDOT's website. It, it's a good refresher and overview of the timeframe that this big project is going to take. And right there in the middle, you'll see that we are just at the end of 2023 and coming into 2024 where we are starting our utility relocation work. As we dive into that, I wanted to remind everybody that in 2022 and then really 20, the middle of 2023, the city bid out one large project. I'm going to actually advance one, and I might end up going back, but the project that we're looking at is over 6,000 feet of water line, over 7,000 feet of sanitary sewer line, and over 2,600 feet, I'm sorry, yeah, 2,600 feet of storm sewer line, along with some storm sewer separation. So we're going to be able to separate some old storm line that is connected into our sanitary lines downtown. This is a lot of infrastructure that we're needing to realign and, and replace, and we're grateful for the opportunity to replace our aging infrastructure. However, it's a lot of work that needs to be done and in a very short timeframe. So the city put this out for bid as one big project, and we got an astronomical bid back to the tune of almost $30 million over our engineer's estimate. So that shock factor allowed us to kind of reset, go back and, and work more closely with KDOT to see if we can tweak the project a little bit. They were very helpful in allowing us more flexibility with the alignment of our relocation efforts for our infrastructure. We were able to do some redesign work, work with KDHE through their approval process. And we ended up breaking this project up into six smaller projects that we were hoping to be able to get more competitive bids on if we bid it out like that. So that has come to fruition. This next slide, I'll get into more cost details here towards the end of the presentation. But this next slide is an overview of projects two through seven. So we refer to the first large project that was bid as project number one. When we rebid, we ended up calling the six projects, projects two through seven. It's a little confusing. But we'll go through each of these projects in succession, starting with project number two. As you can see here, project number two started in late 2023, and I'm happy to say that we are basically wrapped up with that project. It's not final completion stage quite yet, but traffic is back open, and the first of the six projects is almost completely finished. We're happy to have that one under our belt. We have worked out some of the kinks and, and we're excited to apply some of those lessons learned to the rest of these projects as we roll them out. As we move through these project slides, you'll see some areas highlighted in blue. So this project number two was water line replacement. That's the blue lines that you can see under the blue shading. The blue shading is just noting where we were going to have or where we may have major traffic impacts. So as we move through these, when you see the blue ovals, don't get too alarmed, that's not necessarily implying that we'll have full road closures. That could be lane reductions. It could be one-way traffic on a street that would normally have two-way traffic. It could also be complete road closures, but that's what we're working on as we collaborate together and move through this project to try to minimize those impacts. Project three, you can see is a, it's actually a very large storm box that we're having to install underneath I-70 and the I-70 on-ramp going west. This project is going to start this year, and we're hoping that that is completed by November. You can see major traffic impacts would be First Street again and that on-ramp going on to I-70. Project four, we are currently awarding this bid as well. I think we have awarded that one. I'll, I'll have more details on that here shortly as well. But this project is anticipated to be complete in the end of January of 2025. This is a great deal of sanitary sewer work, along with a little bit of storm sewer work over to the west, just off of Polk. So you can see major traffic impacts there are really Second Street and some of the businesses that are located in that area. Project five, we awarded this to Bettis. We're hoping that this is a major project as well. You can see there's a lot of storm, I'm sorry, a lot of sanitary and water line relocation work here. This one, we hope to have done by late January of 2025. We have some contingencies in place to, if weather conflicts, et cetera. We could have some allowance to go past January, but we, we really are trying hard to hit that January 2025 deadline so that KDOT can come in and start their work. Project six was awarded to MCON Construction. This one is anticipated to be complete at the end of that January period as well. This has water, storm, sewer, and sanitary. And you can see we have some pretty major traffic impacts there on Monroe and Madison and Fourth Street. Last but not least, project seven is far west of the larger Polk Quincy scope. It is a lot of sanitary sewer lining, so we're happy that that's not going to be a major impact traffic-wise. We will have some neighborhood impacts here that we will work with the residents in the area as we have our contractors moving in and out of there. But most people won't even see, they may see some staging down in Auburndale Park, but it's not going to be a major traffic impact at all for this last project. That is an MCON construction project as well. We're hoping that one's wrapped up in late May of 20, of this year. All right. So stepping back a little bit back to that cost, as I noted before, the city originally committed $20 million in matching funds to get this project kicked off. We had initial engineering estimates, and then in this chart, there's construction costs as they have come in through these bids. So to explain it a little bit more, you'll see the first horizontal line is costs for design inspection, administration, and debt issuance to the tune of almost $5 million. And then as the projects go down two through seven, you will have one column that was their engineer estimate, and then where those bids came in and the difference. So we totaled that at the bottom. The first column with engineering estimates were 22, just over $22 million. Without project three, because that just closed, we were looking at those bids coming in at almost $17.5 million. If we plug in at the bottom right-hand of this table, you'll see an asterisk mark that 19 million, almost 19.5 will round up. If we took the engineer estimate for project three and just plugged that in there, we're looking at almost 19 and a half million dollars. So while that appears to come in under budget, and we're very excited about that, I definitely want to make sure that I don't leave here with you all thinking that this is going to come in under budget. We, we have had some fast and furious work to try to get this redesign done, get these bids out, and get these projects kicked off. We know based on the age of our infrastructure and the nature of all of the different conflicts downtown in this area that we're likely to run into some issues as we move along. So we are prepping ourselves. We're, we're very hopeful. We are happy and pleased with our bids that have come in. However, we want to make sure that we are prepared for work change directives that may happen in the field, contingencies, cost of, of labor and materials as they may come in, depending on what the market's looking like. And then we also are currently doing some soil sampling that may result in soil remediation based on some of the nature of the area we're working in. And so thinking about that, we are expecting that we'll see some overages, and we're hoping to still maintain that initial estimate, but we just want to put that out there so that everybody knows that is not set in stone that we're going to come in under that budget. We are working though with KDOT and other folks to, the state of Kansas, to see if we can, what we can do in the event that we run over. So we're very mindful of that. The city manager has really been working hard to try to convey this message that while we're happy with where we're at and the collaboration that has resulted in these new bids, we want to make sure that we're smart about this as we move forward. I want to express a lot of appreciation and thanks for the coordination efforts that have happened to date between us and KDOT, KDHE, the Corps of Engineers, and our internal city departments. We have a lot of communication that we have had and are continuing to have with public works, the projects that they have slated to move forward. Communications, how are we rolling out communication efforts for this project, and how can we keep people up to date? Topeka Police Department and Topeka Fire Department are impacted by this heavily, so we want to make sure that we continue communications with them as they're trying to conduct business. We are hoping to minimize the traffic control impacts that we have, and all of our traffic control plans are going to be reviewed and coordinated between utilities and public works. We have standing meetings that we've set up with, between our departments so that we can collaborate. And if we need to change timeframes and, and move some things around between the departments, between the contractors that are responsible for all of these jobs, we're going to do our best to do that. And we're also coordinating with Topeka Metro so that we can make sure we're communicating those and, and our bus, our bus system runs smoothly. Last but not least, I have some information for you. The city has set up its own webpage, topeka.org/utilities/pqv. We are setting that live. I think there was a press release today that Gretchen helped us put together. We want to be posting our active detours there for major detours as they come up, so people can refer there and do some project updates as well. And then if you are interested in more information on the larger KDOT project, I have their website up as well, polkquincy.org. If you go to the city's webpage, it will give you contact information for our lead project manager, Michelle Meiswender. She's done a great job of trying to coordinate all of the city's efforts, along with the rest of the team. Our consulting design engineers, contact information, that's Ethan Meyer with Barlin West. They've been a huge help. And then I, I don't want to end without saying a huge thank you to city staff, again, utilities and public works, and then Barlin West as our consultant who has helped us collaborate with KDOT and KDHE and everybody else as we're trying to move through this project. So I, that, I'm done, and I'll be happy to answer some questions. And again, we have some staff if there's very specific project questions.
Thank you very much. Councilman Dobler.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Sylvia. Great presentation. Just to simplify things, what, what was the original bid when it was one huge project? Roughly?
Almost $50 million.
So we went from $50 million to $20 million?
Twenty million. Yes, sir.
Wow. That's, that's huge, and, and kudos, I can say that now since a couple of my colleagues are gone, that didn't like that word. Kudos to everybody involved. And I know, as you've mentioned, but really the relationship between the city, Barlin West, KDOT, KDHE, I don't know exactly, I know the Corps fit in because it was the levy. It's really fantastic. We, we always hear about the instances where the cooperation is not as good as it could have been. This is probably one of the best examples of city-state cooperation that, that I've certainly seen in, in my career. And I'd like to point out Deb Tanking is the, I don't know, she's run this project since, almost since the beginning, and you can't find a more cooperative person than, than her. So I think between you and your staff, who have done a great job in, in KDOT, in particular Deb, I think it's, it's just, it's amazing, frankly. Whoever would have thought we would have, in, in this time period where construction costs continue to rise, we've actually, actually went from $50 million to less than half of that. So thank you, and thanks, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Want to put out some compliments as well. Every single one of these projects is in District One, and there have been a number of hearings. And the staff has done a wonderful job with them, the staff and the consultants. They have welcomed that input, and they've gotten good input. And sometimes it doesn't take many people to come, but you know, when you're blocking the end of a one-way street, when the people say, can we have a two-way street now and maybe forever so we can get back out of our house? maybe forever so we can get back out of our house? They've had input on reroutes. You know, staff had looked at maps and picked out things and people in the neighborhoods that live there had said, ooh, not Clay Street next to Meadows Elementary, pick something else, that kind of thing. Also, people have brought up events that can affect the timing of when, when, when a closing would happen. And sometimes the events are right there, like at Wardmead Park or at Potwin, you know, when people are, thousands of people are driving through for things, knowing that, that you're going to have to work around your timing of your construction or the event to make sure that it's optimal and the staff has really been responsive. Sometimes it's, it's secondhand too, like on these, the closings on Monroe that were up there, staff had not been aware that the Branner Street Bridge gets closed midsummer for Fiesta. And so in terms of rerouting traffic, and so all those kinds of things got brought up. And again, I appreciate the neighborhood hearings and the responsiveness to the people who live and work in these places as well. And so I wanted to mention that both in terms of congratulating and appreciating you all and the related groups, but also to encourage everybody on the council, when those neighborhood hearings come up, do show up and do encourage people to come because they know things that somebody who doesn't live there might not realize. And it's been really helpful in this, we're not done, right? But it's been really helpful and so just appreciate the process and all that you're doing. Thank you.
For any comment, questions? Councilman Duncan.
All right, I just have a few questions and I know you're one piece of a big puzzle, so you may not have answers. So I guess if you don't, we'll direct them to the city manager who can maybe write these down and then, you know, collectively we can get some answers here. I heard the part of the plan is at some point, I'm not sure we know which phases, to close Kansas Avenue Bridge, Topeka Boulevard Bridge. I guess my, my general questions are, is that absolutely necessary? I mean, as opposed to going down the two lanes on one side, you know, better than no access, do we know what phases of the project those are going to happen and kind of what the impact of that's going to be? Because those are pretty, those are, we all know, well-used veins, you know, and any closure is kind of going to be what it is, but.
Absolutely. That really, we heard a lot about that, a lot of strife already just with the thought of closing those down. And we may very well have to. However, we are trying to minimize by saying, can we close it at the very last minute and have it back open the same day? It really depends on what all we're doing and how those contractors can get in there and do that. So we won't know a lot of those specifics until they can, several of these projects have just been awarded and they're trying to stage and figure out the coordination efforts amongst one another. So that's really where that coordination comes into play, is how can we do this with the least amount of impact? We're looking at impacts to parking for the federal building, all sorts of things that we've had to take into consideration. And closing those major bridges and roads are huge. We may very well have to do it. We're just trying to keep it as short as possible.
Sure. And then I also see is it phase six, I think, closes Madison and Monroe. I mean, there are businesses on Madison and Monroe. Are we starting to look now at, I mean, I don't, I've honestly, I've honestly looked at that map and I don't know how they're going to access their businesses. I mean, I know KDOT and other people are very smart and can create alternatives, but that's the only phase of this project I've looked at where I've looked at it and said, that's really true closure for those businesses down there. And I don't know if we've already talked with them about it or, so I don't know. If you have any insight on that piece of it, but if not.
Sure. If anybody is dying to come up and explain a little bit more, but.
No, if the city manager's listening, he can make a note and get some answers.
We'll give you some information, some more information as we go, but I can tell you that there's been a lot of boots on the ground work trying to talk to these businesses and the people that are impacted by this. Keep in mind that those blue traffic impact markers don't necessarily mean full closures. Some of them will, but we're hoping to stage that so that not all of these streets are closed at the same time.
Gotcha.
Yep.
And then I do appreciate the new update to the website because I do think information is key. I think the number one complaint we'll hear, I think people are, we're preparing people for the chaos of this project, the organized chaos, right? But I think the more we can give them that resource and the soonest we can put out as much information as humanly possible to give them a heads up, that, that helps us because that'll be the number one. You didn't tell us, right? We're like, yes, we did. We put it out months in advance or however soon we could. So, so I appreciate that update that's out there on the, on the website, so.
I might, I might add, if you go to that, the city's website, you can sign up for email updates and we will blast out emails as we go.
Okay, that's good to know too, because I'm sure there are a lot of people who'd like to get that.
Yep.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilwoman Hofer.
Unlike everyone else who's on council, this is going to greatly affect my business because it is down in this area and everybody knows that's on staff, how it's going to affect. But what some people don't know, there's another project and it hasn't been mentioned tonight. They are going to resurface River Road. And so they're going to have to stage that how they, the best they can, but it goes from Crane Street, I believe it's over into Oakland, just past the Santa Fe grounds, their workshops. So that one is going to be a bottleneck. I know there are several businesses that are heavily affected by this, like UPS, Hills, Kansas Gas Service, and a lot of smaller businesses, including my own. We're going to have to have a special detour for heavy vehicles to get back into the neighborhood when they have Madison Monroe closed and figure out how we can get off of I-70 back down into this area. So I want everyone to know that we are really trying to work hard to make this work for everyone who's involved down in this area that it's truly going to affect how we get in and out. And I hate to say it, if there's any kind of emergencies, it will require AMR, the fire department, the police department to know how to get from here to there. This is a very complicated project and it's not going to stop with utilities. It's going to go all the way through construction of Polquency. It's already affected a lot of businesses and at the time being, I'm kind of thinking maybe it would have been best if we would have been moved, but we weren't in that area. So those that got out won't have to deal with this, thank God. But I just wanted to make sure that everyone knows, we are truly trying to make the best opportunities and the couple of public meetings we've had have been pretty well attended and a lot of items have been brought up that somebody hasn't thought about. So if there's a meeting, and I'm assuming this will be on the website, if you don't live in the area and you're not automatically notified, if you see it and you want to come, please come to those meetings and find out what's happening. And I'll tell you, I was lucky enough, we had multiple. There is an oversized drawing that those of us who are visually challenged that need readers, anytime you want to look at it, just let me know. Councilmember Hiller also has one. Because sometimes you just need a visual aid to explain to people, okay, this is where it's going to be, this is how you may get cut off and how you've got to work around it. So anyone that wants to know, just call and let us know. We'd be more than happy to try and help you figure out what's happening. And this is a very large expenditure by the city, the state and the federal government. We want to do it right, with the least number of problems, get it done. And I can tell you from past projects in our neighborhood with water, sewer, stormwater, this neighborhood is not easy. We had a big hole in front of our shop that was 30 foot long, 17, no, 16 foot wide and originally 17 feet deep. And they ran into a gas line and it ended up having to go down another, I believe it is another four feet to clear that line. So it's, I'm anticipating change orders as much as we don't want to, but there are things that happen down that area. There's abandoned lines, there are, there's just a lot of things that have been there for a very long time that you're going to have to be patient with. So anyway, thank you to everyone who's worked on it so far and hopefully we'll keep going in the right direction. Thank you, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Valdivia Akala.
Thank you, Mayor. Continued shout out to Braxton because he has been coming into the Oakland community to let folks know about what's coming down the pike is, along with other infrastructure repairs that are going to be going on. I will say this though, for anybody out there listening, for the media, you know, it's, it's so important along with what the city is doing to continue to get the notices out. And I think the city is being very proactive, but I was very concerned, I'm just going to say this about, you know, Oakland in a small section in North Topeka, how we're not getting the attendance at these meetings that we need to. And it's not that the city is not being really forthcoming with the information. I think that one of the challenges we face is how to get people there to the meetings and then when they're not at the meetings and then they don't know, you see it all over social media on any number of pages, that the city is doing this, that the city is doing that. And you know, it's not perfect by any means, but you know, that's part of that citizen-city engagement that has to happen. And when Braxton came into Oakland and, you know, was talking about River Road and then was letting folks know the other meetings that were going to happen with 24 and 25 and the bridges being closed, you know, people's jaws were dropping, but at the same time, there was only six people there. So you know, I would just say, city is doing a good job with getting the word out, but we need help from every, everybody, all of our partners, because we need to work harder or people's, average citizens need to be attending these meetings. We just need, we need higher attendance. And we do have some concerns in Oakland with some of these shifts that's going to, that are going to be happening and because Oakland has so many side, very small constricted streets, what that is going to mean for semi-traffic flow, you know, for, for some of these improvements and shutdowns that are going to happen. But I just always, as always, a big thank you to Braxton and crew and also to you, Sylvia. Thank you, Mayor.
For the comment? I do appreciate the comments that Councilwoman Hofer brought up and she covered one area I was going to ask about and I'm sure that you've given it some consideration Sylvia. When you're talking about the impacts, especially when it comes to maybe constricting traffic flow over the bridges and stuff, is being able to still respond to emergency services by the fire and police to make sure that it's still available in a way that doesn't put anybody on any side of town in any danger. So I appreciate all the attention you're giving to that and thank you, Braxton, as well, for your work in spreading the word, getting it out there. Hopefully the NIA's will carry it too and to the neighborhoods and maybe they'll be able to help spread the word as well. Thank you for the presentation, it's very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. Move on to agenda item number three, the consent agenda, Brenda.
Is approval of a workers' compensation claim settlement in the amount of up to $47,711.84 to resolve the claim with Richard Martinez on running award for a work-related injury sustained by an employee while engaged in normal work duties. Be our minutes of the regular meeting of January 2, 2024 and there are no applications.
Heard the consent agenda is read. Their motion? Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler, second. By Councilman Kell. We don't have to do roll call though.
Councilmembers Dobler? Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Bob's still here.
Banks?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
We have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Move on to agenda item number four, action items. Brenda?
Is a public hearing to obtain citizen input on the city of Topeka's 2024 Annual Consolidated Action Plan.
Okay, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor of Governing Body. Every year you look at the Consolidated Action Plan, which is, is how we spend HUD dollars in housing and neighborhood improvements in the community. And I believe since this is under action items, you will be asking for approval tonight, no?
Actually, approval will be on the agenda for the 16th meeting.
All right. So I turn it over to Rihanna and Carrie to lead you through this.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Governing Body. I just want to start off by taking a moment to say, this is a first go-around for me doing the Consolidated Action Plan and talk to staff and team about how this has been done in the past. And you know, it was brought to my attention that, you know, sometimes the presentation can be confusing and sometimes the data is hard to understand, which happens with HUD funds. I completely understand that. So I have to give a lot of thanks to the work that Carrie and Katrina and team put into this year's presentation and the supporting documents that you have a copy of, they were in your packet and then Brenda provided a copy of the documents that are all color-coded in a great way that I hope makes this really easy to follow along with, but at any time, please feel free to stop us and ask questions.
All right, so we are going to talk about the 2024 Consolidated Action Plan, which we call the CON Plan for short. So the CON Plan is a comprehensive plan of how housing services will use the HUD entitlement grant funding. So the city of Topeka is an entitlement city. That means we automatically receive these funds and they are usually about the same amount each year. The CON Plan also allows us to have a framework for community engagement so that we can get the community's input on how they think that we should be using the funding and what their priorities are as well. And then it also provides a summary of actions that we submit to HUD. So it tells HUD how we're going to go about completing these activities, what our estimated outputs and outcomes will be as well. So first I want to do an overview of our housing services budget to kind of give you an idea of what we're talking about tonight. So we are talking about the CON Plan grants. They are the three grants. It is the Community Development Block Grant, which is CDBG for short. It is the Home Investment Partnership Program Grant, which we call HOME for short. And then it is the HESG, Hearth Emergency Solutions Grant. So that is, if you look at the pie chart, it is the green is what we're talking about tonight. Housing Services has four different sort of buckets of funding and we are just looking at the CON Plan tonight, which is 30% of our overall funding. So the first grant is our CDBG grant. It is approximately 1.8 million and you can see listed out the different programs that this grant funds. It's the majority of our rehab and repair programs and housing services that assist low and moderate income households. And on the handouts that you have in your packet, it'll give you more details on each of the different programs and what the expected outputs and outcomes are as well. Some of the grant funding also goes to community engagement and you'll see the different service activities that are listed, Dreams, NIA Support, Blight, et cetera, are activities that community engagement manages. And then the grant also funds four and a half FTEs, which are our inspector positions. The second grant is our home grant. Again, you can see the programs that are listed out there. You will notice some repeats, for instance, the major rehab program. It is funded by both the CDBG grant and the home grant and we have several programs that are like that. That, the home grant is a total of about almost $560,000. And then the third grant that is part of the CON Plan is the HESG grant. It funds the programs of rapid rehousing, homeless prevention and shelter. This, these programs, an RFP will go out for any agencies that would like to apply for the funding, they can submit an application. This grant also covers our homeless management information system, that is HMIS for short. That is software that HUD requires that we use. We share it with our social service agencies in the community to prevent duplication of services. And then we also use that system to pull all of our HUD funding on a monthly, quarterly and annual basis as well. So part of the CON Plan, HUD requires that we leverage the, the grants in order So part of the CON Plan, HUD requires that we leverage the, the grants in order to receive their funding and to expand programs. This is where we will look at sort of the other three buckets of funding that housing services receives. So we do receive COC grants. Those are HUD grants, but they are competitive HUD grants. So they are in a different bucket. We receive private grants from the community and you can see some of those listed out. And then we also receive general funds from the city of Topeka. You will notice that that category is high and that is because it includes the 1.7 million in dreams infrastructure that community engagement manages. As part of the CON Plan, we have numerous public meetings in order to receive feedback from the community and what they think our priorities should be. You'll see listed here all of the different meetings that we've had. We open up a 30-day public comment as well. This evening is our last public hearing. It will be back on the agenda next week in order for council to vote on it. And then the next steps from there, we will send our rough draft into HUD. HUD will give us our allocation amounts usually in February and they send back our draft of the CON Plan with comments and notes. We'll open it back up for a 30-day comment period, make any changes that we want to, and then it goes back to HUD for final approval, that's usually in March. And I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions before I open the public hearing? Councilwoman Hiller?
I want to give you great credit for, for the effort that you put in. I think you mentioned to us before that one of your focuses this year on, on developing this plan was to add in a lot more information about other sources of funds and other things that we're doing to complement these funds, which is supposed to update our, up our scores with them, if I recall correctly, right? Our ratings?
It won't with this particular grant because of it being entitlement funds, but it does with our COC grants.
Okay. Two quick questions. When I looked at this plan and compared it to last year's, I didn't really see any significant changes. Are there any in terms of dollar allocations to activities?
That is correct. There have been no major changes. The programs that we have seem to be working really well and so without an increase in funding, we are just funding the current programs that we have.
Okay, good. And second question was, are there any particular highlights from citizen input that you got that you could share?
Yes. So some of the community feedback we received was increasing funding to the Chodos, adding a land bank to our programs, also just honestly increasing funding overall in order to either expand the programs we already have or add additional programs.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other, I'm going to, at this time, open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone present who would like to speak to this matter. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this matter? And for the third time, is there anyone present who would like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Any further comments from the governing body? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. We come now to public comment. Under public comment, I have three individuals signed up. I'll call them in the order that I have. Kirby Evers. Last time, Kirby Evers. Okay. Michael Skelton. Michael Skelton. Michael Skelton. Okay. Mr. Daltmeyer, yes, correct. Whenever you're ready, sir.
Okay. Thank you, City Council, for your time. I am Chuck Daltmeyer. John Roland Hagan and I are the owners of Daltmeyer Homes. We are developer builders. I appreciate the city's bond program. The bond program exists to encourage development and allows the developer to build and conserve capital. With this program, the Topeka residential developers have been able to invest in this community, but now this very program has a leverage on the city. John and I own over 500 platted lots in the city and county and we have a huge interest in lot valuations. We are here to address Lawrence Bay subdivision Phase One special assessment delinquencies. For 10 years, I met multiple city managers to defend the city bond program and lot valuations. There doesn't need to be any discounting on this infrastructure. John and I have met with the majority owner on four different occasions and for 10 years, the response was, I'll get back to you. We couldn't get that second meeting. We believe we could market all of Phase One and pay back the city's assessments in full and more. I'm totally invested in keeping Lawrence Bay Phase One lots at fair values. I'm not interested in owning one Lawrence Bay Phase One lots. We own Phase Two and Phase Three. Topeka builders needed these lots five years ago. One of the, this phase is prime ground and in the pathway of Topeka's growth. This phase has a lot of potential, trafficway to get to great schools, restaurants, retail, and close to I-70 highway, yet it has never had a marketing plan. The project is already discounted to 2008 prices that are forever gone and to build this phase again would be double the cost. There are 125 lots with a mailing address of 3024 Southwest Wanamaker Suite 300. Midwest Health occupies this suite. Jim Klosman is the business owner. Eighty of the 125 lots cost him $1. The discounted lot cost with 2008 infrastructure prices, his financial advantage was unbelievable. There are four LLCs with a Wanamaker mailing address that have delinquent taxes over $6.6 million. Early on, I encouraged the city to enforce the resolution that states, delinquent taxes are specials, no city services, to turn off the water to the successful businesses, but delinquent taxes and specials would have been paid. The lawyers determined LLC have no liability on his successful businesses. I believe creating an LLC with negative liability in mind has no intentions to work in good faith. No one forced the investor to take 125 lots. With ownership, there are liabilities. The events that followed...
You still have a minute, sir, go ahead.
The events that followed cost the city $7 million in unpaid infrastructure, but even more west-side development in the city was hurt. Daltmeyer Homes alone built $75 million in assets outside of the city limits. These assets continue to work for the county. The housing market soared, Lawrence Bay Phase One and Two and Three would have been built out. Last June, there was a sheriff's sale on 22 lots. Judgment was rendered and the city lost $1,088,000. We built 59 homes in Phase Two, but not knowing what Phase One lot values would be, we moved our buildings to the county. One of the LLCs addressed 3024 Southwest Wanamaker Suite 300 is Clayton Properties LLC. It includes the 16 late lots that have no delinquency and a possible value of $1.6 million. But Clayton Properties also have seven lots with taxes and special assessments due $1.2 million. Clayton Properties will have a chance to balance the assets and liabilities and create a positive for Topeka's.
Sir, would you like to more, have more time to complete?
Yeah. I don't have much more, maybe two minutes.
Okay. Motion to approve, two more minutes. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, just proceed, sir.
Okay, the specials on 109 lots is $30,000 a month. That is a real commitment and probably creates second thoughts and the need for a discount. The discount is not about the value of the lots. The city was forced to cover the bonds and like it or not, the city might as well accept the deeds. This project will be slow and hurt at first. There are some hurdles. If the city gives me a can-do committee, this project will move forward. Foreclosure process by the city would be a cost that is not necessary. The property needs to be turned over to the city with no cost agreement. The subdivision created a possible felony. There was Home Resolution 8726 violation. A benefit district will not be approved if any signature to a petition has a financial interest in any existing development with delinquent tax obligations and will be required to certify under oath that they have no financial interest in any property with the delinquent special assessments. Wheatfield Village should not have been approved.
Continue, sir.
There needs to be a follow-up with a petition signature on Wheatfield Village. We must now compete with 22 lots with a land cost of $276 and paid up infrastructure. Unless there is action by August, the county plans on foreclosures for another group of lots of 1.5 million lost to the city and will eventually foreclose the entire project costing the city $14 million. The city housing development on the west side will still become stag, will still become stagnant. Phase One restrictions are 1,250 square feet and $276 lot. The values of this subdivision will drop. To attempt to discount, the loss any further will be met with an aggressive battle. Developers, builders, and constituents should believe delinquent property taxes and special of $6.6 million is a Topeka problem. There are some possibilities we have to offer. Daltmeyer Homes subdivision, I'm sorry, I didn't make it.
Okay, I understood, sir. Unless there's an objection, I would extend your time for another two minutes.
No, I got two.
Any objection from the council? Seeing none, proceed.
Thank you. Thank you. Daltmeyer Homes subdivisions are exclusive sales only. Our name guarantees value to our homebuyers. We have no problem selling neighborhoods. We will bring value to this abandoned subdivision with a group effort of Topeka builders. This subdivision will not be exclusive. It will have an organized marketing plan. Yanni was the original developer and the owner of Lawrence Bay Villas. Jack McGivern was burnt. Now Jack owned 40 lots with $5,600 a month specials. He eventually hired Daltmeyer Homes, who built the homes and are now valued at $230,000 each. The city now has a $9 million subdivision. There was no discounting or a holdout. City specials are paid in full. I believe we can create a plan to reimburse all the city infrastructure and possible $4 million gain on the land to be deposited in a newly formed land bank for the good of the community. Any questions?
At this point, Mr. Daltmeyer, during the public discussion, we don't have a question and answer back.
Okay.
Have you completed your statement? I thank you.
I would like somebody to get back with me and City Council, so it just doesn't get dropped again for, for amount of time. So if somebody could get back with me, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, there's no one else signed up for public comment. There is a need for an executive session. I think we want to go to announcements first. And we'll start with Brenda, please.
All right. For the January 16th agenda, we have two presentations. The, on the consent agenda, we have two resolutions. The first designated depositories, the second is for the Kansas Municipal Investment Pool. Action items include the election of NTPO board members and Joint Economic Development Board members. We have three planning items. The first one is a zoning ordinance for 13 acres located near south of Northwest US 24 Highway, Frontage Road, and Northwest Vale Avenue. The second one is Flynn Group, is a planned unit development at 901 Southwest Topeka Boulevard. And the third one is a historic Holiday Park neighborhood plan update. And then the final thing for action is approval of the 2024 Consolidated Action Plan and Budget. And the non-action items include discussions on the LMI supplemental grant funding and a discussion on the city's vegetation ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor of governing body, I'd like to, we just had a great snow removal event last night. And I'd like to thank Braxton and his people for getting those streets cleaned and everybody that helped with that so that we could get up this morning and we could travel around. It was as good of snow cleaning event as what I've seen in my almost 44 years. So thank you, Braxton.
Anything further, sir? Okay. We'll start with Councilman Miller. Any announcements?
No announcements. No announcements today. I want to also thank Braxton and his team. The roads were wonderful. They really were good after last night. We were really worried about it, a lot of closings going on. That's very impressive, but no other announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dobler?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make comment on the passing of, for some of us who grew up in Topeka, Boils Joyland, Jerry Boils, who, who did that passed away on Sunday, brought a lot of joy to a lot of people at a certain time in Topeka, closed in the late 80s. But the carousel that was there is still the one that's in Gage Park and people still enjoy it today. So I just wanted to let folks know that he passed away and appreciate all he did for Topeka during his time and he will be missed. So thank you, Mayor, that was it for the evening.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hofer?
I'm just going to back up something that the police chief said. The Citizens Academy starts, I believe, on February 29th. And if anybody is interested and wants to know more about the police department, I endorse going through the program. Councilmember Duncan and I have both been through the program. I just graduated in November sometime. It's very interesting and I think it's well worth the time and it's just, it's a great program and it's a lot of fun. You meet some really interesting people you would never have met that are in the class and we had just a great group. So if anyone's interested, applications are out and please consider joining it. That's all.
Did you finally get your ride along?
No, I still have to do my ride along.
Okay. You gotta get that done. That's the last piece. Thank you. Councilwoman Hiller?
I want to personally echo the credits to the staff at the street and all the related departments as well. We got calls, I assume other people did, from at least one of the TV stations today going, okay, and what kind of calls have you gotten from citizens with this big snowstorm? And my answer was none. It was really great to be able to say that and she might have been disappointed, but I was pretty proud of that on all counts. Other than that, wanted to take a moment to recognize the passing of two individuals who have been really important to this city. One is former Councilman Bill Haynes, who passed a week or so ago, whose funeral services are this week. And, you know, I remember coming to council meetings when he was serving and I really appreciated his service to the council and to the community. He was also really well-known as a good advisor for the human resources and labor. He'd done the litigation with the school boards, but also was, was very involved in that in his practice. So I really appreciated Bill. Also, a gentleman named Ted Mize, who lives at roughly Eighth and Western Past as well. And Ted was the gentleman who has a, for a little while, as a, as a paid staff person for the city, but otherwise on his own anyway, went around and picked up illegal street signs from the parking all over town. He was better known because he helped paint, clear out and paint fire hydrants all over the city. He did that on his own. He also was willing later to mentor groups of volunteers that wanted to learn how to do that. And his, his efforts are seen all over the city. He was a super guy. So credit to both of them. Thank you.
I remember him. He was District Five, wasn't he?
He's District One.
Bill Haynes.
Oh, Bill Haynes was District Five, that's right. Yes.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Christina Valdiviakola?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to remind people, it's going to be very, very cold in the upcoming days, so take care of each other and stay warm. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if everybody realizes, but Ted's wife died several days before him, so they were lovebirds, if you remember that, Councilwoman Hiller. So they, I think it was the 27th, she died the 27th of December. So that was, not, not Ted's wife, that was...
It was Bill's wife.
I apologize. Yeah, Bill's wife, so.
Yeah, Connie died in 09.
She was a huge participant in the community as well. I, I too want to thank... I too want to thank Braxton, and if I'm not mistaken, I believe today is Gretchen's last council meeting, is that correct?
Yeah.
I tell you, I met Gretchen when she came over from the Police Department, and she was a ball of fire. And I'm going to miss you, Gret. One more issue before I leave, I want you to take care of that. But she's going to be okay in life, and I expect big things out of her. And she did say if I went out to California, she would take me to Alcatraz, so I'm on my way out there, and I won't take note for an answer because I've been wanting to do that for a long, long time. But thanks for your leadership. Thanks for being you. And I tell you, your department is truly going to miss you. I'm going to miss you. I couldn't even get the words out of my mouth, and you'd say, "We got this, we got this." So good luck to you. And if you ever need to come back home, Kansas is home, come back, okay? But if I don't see you before then, I would give you a hug, but I got scouted for hugging, so I won't do that. But just know I will miss you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Banks?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kell?
Just want to say thank you to all the people out there cleaning out the roads. Reminder that this will melt and refreeze, so make sure you're watching the roads and not driving too fast on the roads because there will be patches of ice over the next couple of days from some of this melting and also blowing across the roads. And also, it's the start of the winter sports season. A lot of schools have started up their football, I mean their basketball, their wrestling, bowling, cheerleading, and other activities that have going on. So make sure you get out and support your local high schools, your alma mater's, and that's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I want to reiterate the good work that Braxton and his crew did. They were out all night, I know because they kept me awake, because I could hear them running up and down, and I was glad they were done it because I knew the morning was going to look pretty bad had they not been doing that. But they were out there literally all night making sure the roads were clear. So again, thank you very much to the crews that were out there when we were all taking it nice and easy at home. And I want to add to the compliments that Councilwoman Ortiz gave to Gretchen. I remember when Gretchen came over too from PD, and it's been a real interesting relationship, I think, because we've learned from each other, and I have to say that it's the first PIO that I consulted as much as I have with you, Gretchen. I think you brought a different level of insight to the communications that you provided for the city. I think you were careful in how you approached everything, knowing that you represented the city. And between you and your partner over there at GTP, you did a lot to help me through a lot of those situations. So I thank you. I wish you well for your new endeavors, and anytime you want to come back and visit, you know you have a home here in Topeka, Kansas. Gretchen, thank you again. I'd like to give you a round of applause. Now, I do have one formal announcement that I'd like to make. Pursuant to Governing Body rules and procedures 3.2A, I am exercising my authority as mayor to call a special meeting of the governing body. This will be a joint meeting with the Shawnee County Commission. It'll be on Wednesday, January 17th of this year. The time will be from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m., and the location will be the Great Overland Station located at 200 Northwest Railroad Street in Topeka. The topic that will be discussed is the Homeless Initiative Core Team is seeking input from the policymakers on the next stage of the process and the ideation. In this stage, the reframed problem statements are turned into ideas for solutions. I wanted to make this announcement here to let the public know that we are still working as much as we can toward the homeless situation, and we're including the Shawnee County Governing Body with those discussions because it was clear that last year when we presented the state of the community and the intent that was presented to the community that the city and Shawnee County Commission will be working more closely together, hopefully, in this year and collaborating on problems that we share. This is more than just talk. This is an action step, so we all get in the same room, hear the same information at the same time, so that there's nobody left out of the loop. So I'm looking forward to this opportunity, and I thank the commission for joining us on that day, and I look forward to some really great results that will come out of it. So after that, there is a need for one executive session this evening. City Attorney?
The motion would be to recess into executive session not to exceed 45 minutes for consultation with the city attorney to discuss attorney-client privileged matters regarding various matters in litigation on multiple different cases as justified by KSA 754319B2. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers. The following staff are requested to assist the governing body in its deliberations. City Attorney Stanley and Chief of Litigation Nate Jefferson and anyone else the governing body may need.
Okay, you've heard the need for executive session. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, motion to approve by Councilman Kell, second by Councilwoman Hofer. Okay. All, can we just do, everybody in favor, just say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Aye.
We will recess into executive session and give us a 10-minute rehearse, recess, before we start our discussions. Did I say 2:00?
You did.
Okay, we just concluded our executive session, completed our discussions, no action's been taken. There's no further business to come before this body. This meeting is adjourned.